Good morning. Thank you all for being here at eight thirty in the morning. It's a little different timelines, but we can't control another nature. So we have to deal with it and make adjustments. Our first session is a work session. Item number one is discussion regarding natural gas costs. The second item on the work session agenda is the interviews for the vacant seat on city council. I'd like to tell the applicants for that seat that you can sit here during the discussion of the natural gas rates. But at that point, in order to be fair to everybody, we're going to sequester all of you. So the first person or the last person doesn't have an advantage over the ones in first. It's we're trying to be as equitable as we possibly can. So thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Item number one, discussion regarding natural gas costs. I believe that's Mr. Caro.
Good morning, Mayor of City Council. So we had a few questions in the last council meeting about natural gas and why we're raising that. Where the costs are going and how it's going to.
Recording in progress.
So first of all, I'd like to start with the way we build natural gas. We build it in three different areas. We have a meter and billing charge. We have a delivery charge and we have a supply charge. So all we're going to raise is the supply charge. And that's the product that we're purchasing from our supplier. It's no profit on that charge. It's a straight pass through. Right now, we're undercharging for what we're paying for it. We're paying forty-three cents a CCF. We're selling for twenty-three cents. So we need to adjust that and get that up to even. A proposal is to do it in two separate steps. One in March first of a raise of ten cents. And then again, November first, another ten cents. And at that point, hopefully, if gas stays where it's at right now. And the market looks like right now it's supposed to stay there, but anything can happen and if you go up or down. And then we'll look at it around probably September, October and see if our predicted study is going to stay on track or if we have any adjustment a little bit different for November. So the delivery charge, that charge is what we use. Cause I also had a question asked if we if I felt we were overcharging on the delivery charge. Delivery charge is what we use to do our operations and maintenance for our system. Pay some of the wages, the equipment that we purchase. And then just the operations to get natural gas to the customers in a safe and appropriate manner. That's what that money is generated and I don't believe we're overcharging on that. Once the study is all done and we get our gas supply charge back to where it's supposed to be, then I'll have a better understanding of where we're at at that point. Because of the increase of material and labor and equipment, we're doing okay at that point right now. We're not, I don't believe we're overcharging on that. Meter and billing charge is a monthly charge. It's a fixed rate charge. Residents pay eleven dollars and then commercial is twenty-two sixty-five rate on that. And that doesn't go by your consumption, that is just a fixed charge. And then that charge pays for a lot of their accounting, the girls that do the billing and stuff like that. That's where all that money is going to. And a small portion of that goes to operations and maintenance. So those are where the three charges are for the natural gas. We did I did some estimates with other communities in the area to see where we would be once we did the raise increase. And we're right on board with everybody. We're actually probably one of the lowest at this point, even with the increase. We're going to be low, if you looked at, I have that in your packet. We're low on delivery charge. We're low on our supply charge. Meter and billing charges vary from community to community. So that's hard to get a grasp on that. Some are a lot more expensive than ours, some are a little bit cheaper than ours. I think the lowest I found was about eight dollars per residential. And then they went up to two hundred dollars for commercial. So they varied all over from town to town. One thing, you've got to look at the supply charge when you're doing a comparison like this. You can't compare apples to apples because you don't know what that they're doing in that supply charge. If they've undercharged for the previous year, they're trying to make that money up the next year so they might increase it. So that's not the actual cost they're paying for the product that they're getting. It could be under or over at that point. We did a close one, but you look at that one, middle Colorado, which is paying sixty-six cents. So that that could be the undercharge the previous year and now they're just trying to collect their money back. I'm proposing that we're not going to collect money back from the customers. We're going to try to just write off the money that we have not collected from customers at this point. So if we did have to collect that money, our rate will go extremely high. We'd be looking probably at a seventy, eighty cents instead of forty-three cents. So I think that is. And then I also have a little sheet here that shows usage per hundred CCF, what the increases would be for March first, if the ten cents increase. An average house uses anywhere between a hundred fifty and two hundred CCF. So you're looking at, and this is, you know, during the winter time they're using that. You're looking at about a twenty dollar increase after March. And then in November, you're looking at about a forty dollar increase for household. I was also asked if I could get some actual utility bills and do a calculation of the increase on that during the summer month and during the winter month. I used the highest consumption during the winter month, the lowest consumption during the summer month. And we'll go with the residential one first. So during the winter usage, their entire bill was two hundred and fifty-two dollars. With the total increase, it would be two hundred and ninety-two dollars, which is an increase of thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents. And that's the winter time usage. And then their summer usage was an increase of five dollars and twenty-seven cents. And that's with taxes and taxes, that's an entire utility bill. Then I went with the business, which is a downtown business, medium sized business. Winter usage, right now, currently their bill is seven hundred and one dollars, five cents. With the increase for the same month, same usage, it would be eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and eighty dollars. So that that is a little bit of an impact, but you've got to remember that's just for a few months out of the year. Summer usage is an increase of two dollars per month. So when you average it all out, it's just for the few months during the winter, the big impact is going to happen to the customers. And the other thing on the flip side of that, you have to realize that the increases, the difference in that increases is the money that the city is not collecting, that we are paying to our supplier. So you know, right now, the customer is benefiting that hundred and eighty-one dollars more than forty dollars a month. And the city is actually not collecting. So you know, and everything that I've done, all the studies that we've done, you know, I feel that it's in the best interest of the city to move forward with this, try to get it in place as soon as we can. The longer we wait, I won't be able to afford to not go back and collect from the customers. So if we wait too much longer, then we'll have to do another study and see what we need and how much money we'll need to collect from the customers. So the twenty cents increase might go up to thirty or forty cents.
What do you mean by going back and collecting?
Well, we would just have to adjust and right now, so we're, I'll just take this business. Hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents is the difference, what we should be collecting from the customer right now. So the longer we wait, we're losing that amount of money as a city per month through the winter months. So if we wait too much longer, we're not going to have the money in our reserves to come back. So at that point, we would have to increase it like what I'm proposing now is ten cents in March, ten cents in November. If we just continue waiting a little bit longer, we're going to have to increase that even more. Instead of increasing twenty cents total, we might have to go thirty or forty cents. So we don't deplete our reserves completely. We have to have money in the reserves. And the way the study is done right now, we're going to deplete our reserves if we pass this to a certain amount, but we'll still be able to function and operate. If we deplete them past what this study says, then we have to look at another alternative to get that money back.
Just to piggyback on what Steve is saying, we also included, going back to two thousand nine, what the gas supply charge was. And back in two thousand nine, we were charging almost seventy-one cents, point seven one six eight. Two thousand ten, we dropped it down, actually in December of two thousand nine, we dropped it back down to point three seven nine one. At that particular time, city council wrote off fifty percent because again, we were in the same situation. And so city council at that time elected to write off the half of that, which was three hundred and thirty-three thousand, two thirty-five fifty-two. So it's just, as Steve mentioned, if that charge is just directly a pass through charge, we are not to make money on it. So if we are undercollecting, we obviously have to raise that price. If we're overcollecting, then we have to bring that price down because we're not allowed to to keep that money.
The gas rates are commodities, so they're changing by daily, daily changes. So we just try to stay in a balance with that. And that's what I mean, you know, right now, as the rates are today and we kind of do a future forecast of where the rates are going to be at the end of the year. And everything at this point says there's nothing saying that the rates are going to increase dramatically or decrease. So that's what we're staying with that range that we have here.
Mayor, if I may, Steve, Linda, do you mind just talking real briefly about what, why this is important in terms of our capital needs and maintenance and making sure our system is fully functional?
Yeah, so with the delivery charge and stuff that we have and the money that we have in our reserves, our capital improvements that we've done, I'll just say a few that we've done in the past few years is obviously we've done the First Street project, which has been giving us some problems with underground piping there. Our piping in the system was installed in nineteen fifty-one. And up until probably the early seventies, it did not have any cathodic protection on this, which is which protects the piping from corrosion. So up until that point, it was, you know, unprotected piping. First Street has given us problems since I've been here thirty-four years. Since I've started here, I've been working on First Street, trying to repair it. So it was band-aided up pretty good. And now that the First Street project happened, I had the opportunity to go in there and replace my gas lanes. We did over two thousand feet of new piping in that system. We have a six inch pipe. That project was well over three hundred thousand dollars. That came directly out of my budget. It wasn't part of the grant or any of that stuff. Morris Canyon Road up in Allen Dale, I connected from Peach Street down to Santa Fe Trail, which better helps us with circulation of our gas supply up to Holiday Inn, Wendy's and the Red Hut restaurants up in that area. If we have problems on Santa Fe Trail, we could divert that around. So that was part of the new infrastructure improvement. We've been working on our pressure reducing stations. They were installed in nineteen fifty-one, the gate valve was in there in nineteen fifty-one. We replaced regulators back in the late seventies, early eighties, as far as I could tell on historical records. So at this point, I'm trying to remove the valves in there and redo the whole entire stations. We have five stations that need done. I've done two of them so far and we're still working on them. Each station is about forty to fifty thousand dollars to rebuild. And all this work is done internally by my gas department. So we're not going out and having to spend contractors, you know, spend money on contractors. So fortunately, I do have a staff that's capable of doing all of this. We're going to be trained. The money goes into training also to get the guys trained, which in the long run will save us money because we don't have to go out and contract other companies to come in and do it. And then for the future infrastructure improvements and stuff that I want to do, we have, out at the power plant, we have a transfer station that we adopted from CIG back in late sixties, early seventies. There's a lot of above ground piping there that has orifices in it, it has blow off, overpressure blow off things. I'd like to get that removed, get everything put underground. We're looking at about three hundred thousand dollars on that, two hundred thousand dollars as a fuel. And then with the growth that the city is starting to see out north of the industrial park, I'm trying to get a gate station out there so we have adequate supply of gas in North Town. Right now, we have one gate station, which is east by the movie picture showhouse. That gas goes through the entire city, then goes out to industrial park. We have some big usage customers before it gets all the way up to industrial park. So at certain times, we're dropping pressure from eighty to about fifty PSI out there. I'd like to get another gate station out north of town on the Walsenberg line. I've been in contact with Walsenberg. This has been an ongoing project for a few years, quite a while, if you remember. There's a lot of political issues and then Walsenberg's had a lot of turnover in their staff.
Have we made any more progress on that?
I talked to them again. They're willing to do, I'm working with CIG at this point again, to see how it's going to be built. It looks like we're just going to pay Walsenberg for a transportation fee. So I'm in, I'm in with the consultant now, talking with him about how we can set that up. The new staff at Walsenberg has agreed on this, you know, they they agree to put a cap on their line. So the cost of that, you know, is I have eight hundred thousand dollars and that's a projected estimate on that. I'm not sure what I don't know. Once I get this all set up and I got to look at easements going through properties. That was the first big issue that we had. I'm kind of changing the location of where we're going, reducing the properties that we have to go through. So hopefully it works this way. But yeah, it's quite a task to get that done. So that's some of the capital improvements that we have in the future and that's where that money is going to. And this is all to look down to the future of the city, not, I'd like to look twenty years down and make sure when we're all learning stuff that the city's set with natural gas and with supply growth.
We're planning on, are we still planning on doing the Garfield?
Yeah, I have that.
Do you have that in here?
Yep, there is, it is. I'd like to do Garfield. From what I understand from public works and stuff, there's trying to get a grant to widen the street. When I first came on board thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago, whatever it was, we removed that gas line from Hay Street to Espinoza going up Garfield. That line was disconnected and never put back in place. I don't know what the reasoning is for. But that's another part of the infrastructure that we would need because we have just a one feet line into the Allen Dale area. And if anything happens to that line, we'd have to figure out how we would get gas in up into that area. So that's a, that's a big one. So I don't know how we tackle that because there's street improvements that need to be made before I could get my gas line in. So I think that's, you know, we're kind of waiting on the street improvements before.
I'll get on, James, get up.
Get on, get on.
Mr. Williamson will start from the left. Do you have any questions?
So I really appreciate the hesitation. It did, you mentioned the rate stations at forty to fifty K expense. If you had to guess, how much of that cost if you weren't using your labor?
I would probably say fifty to sixty percent had belonged to that.
Well, thank you for you and your staff's professionalism to be able to do that. That's saving the city a lot of money. I know we've discussed it at previous meetings. What is the, what is the amount of money we're looking at currently that we haven't undercollected?
Is it undercollected then?
I have that. So as of November, November of last year, it was two million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and eight cents.
Okay. And so that's the amount that we're looking at not collecting back then?
Yes.
Okay. And you guys, obviously you feel pretty confident. I know this is using the proverbial crystal ball, it doesn't exist. But you're pretty confident with this increase schedule that you have will stop the loss at this point if we implement it.
Yes. Yeah, we've done the numbers. If everything stays the way it is today, it will stop the loss at that point.
And then.
As far as the supply charge.
Sure. This, this may be more involving Cheryl at this point. But if we do stop the loss at this point, will we still have the funds for the improvements you've been discussing?
Yeah, in the budget, we will. We have those budgeted, we have, we don't have the Garfield one budgeted. We do have gate station budgeted. And I believe we have the, we will have the transfer station budgeted.
Okay.
Sorry, you will have both improvements. The Garfield one, like I said, we have a lot of other issues before I can install the gas.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I have no further questions.
Mr. Chairman? So if we've balanced and everything's balanced, what would our reserves look like?
Do you know what the reserves are? I think we're going to drop down to a.
So the handout I've created, well, there's two. The first one is the deferred gas cost in years since two thousand nine. And I know that Linda prepared a report that showed the actual rate we were charging at those times. But you can see in two thousand nine, they were overcollected, then we were under. And in two thousand ten, I believe that's when council said, you know, write off fifty percent of it. And it still left us at three hundred and thirty-three thousand, undercollected. So as you can see throughout the years, the rates are adjusted accordingly to get us back to not so much under and not so much overcollected. And in two thousand eighteen, nineteen and twenty, those years were the epitome of where we should be. We were ninety-three thousand dollars overcollected in two thousand eighteen and then under by the same amount. And then over in two thousand twenty. And in two thousand twenty-one, at the end of the year, that's when we knew something, we knew we had to do an adjustment. However, I believe city manager Valentine and Steve said, we're going to do a rate study to see where we need to be. Well, right after, that's the end of two thousand twenty-one. And then in February of two thousand twenty-two, the war broke out. And that's, it left us in a disaster at the end of two thousand twenty-two because we didn't increase the rates. We were still waiting on the rate study. And then we still haven't increased the rate, well, we did a little bit.
We did increase a little bit.
But.
Rates were projected to drop down, which they didn't do, to where they had projected to drop back down after the war. That's what's really hard is the gas is a commodity and it's all affected by what the world does.
But had we adjusted in two thousand twenty-one, like we normally should have, we probably wouldn't be in this predicament. We were just waiting, waiting on that study. Anyway, I mean, this is where we are right now. We're two point six million, undercollected. And the second spreadsheet that I gave you is our unrestricted cash. And then our fund balance. And people look at our fund balance and say, well, Jesus, it's really healthy. But that fund balance holds that two point six million that we're undercollected. It's treated as a receivable. So in the books, it looks like that money is going to come to us someday. It's not. And it's affecting our cash. If you look at the bottom line of two thousand twenty-two, we are at seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in our unrestricted cash. And then with our, you know, along with our investments, that puts us in a total unrestricted of four million dollars. And that's the cash that we use for operations and capital improvement and that type of thing. So as that under, I mean, deferred gas cost continues to grow in the wrong direction, the cash is getting eaten up. Anyway, I believe that a healthy fund balance should be at least twenty-five percent of expenses, of budgeted expenses for the year. So in two thousand twenty-four, we budgeted almost five million dollars for expenses in the gas department. And twenty-five percent of that is about one point two five million. That's where we need to be to be healthy. But anything above and beyond that gives us the money for capital improvement.
So that's, that's twenty-five percent of either direction or is it adjusted in one direction?
Twenty. We should have twenty-five percent available unrestricted to run the gas department. And that's just, that's the lowest recommended, just in case there's a war here and we don't collect any money. We have at least three months of operating.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Caro, thank you so much for visiting. I think the other day we had a great time sitting down and kind of discussing and actually this a lot. Great knowledge. I would like to thank you. Thank you for doing the billing because it's extremely transparent. Forty dollar increase is not unfeasible, I think, for us to be able to go through. And that's looking at the twenty cent increase versus the just the ten cent increase.
Yes, that's the total increase that we're asking for.
So and so the forty, the point four three 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 is the one that we're looking at for November?
November first, yes.
Now, if we were to put that, let's just say, just as an option, bring that in, in, let's say, April first, you know, and bring that in there, does that put us at a better, a better level?
Yes, it would.
To keep us from actually having that?
Yes, because as you can see, we're, you know, we'd be losing money every month.
Until we.
And that, I'll go back to the business. It's a hundred eighty-one dollars that we're losing from what we are right now to the increase of forty-three cents. So when we cut that in half, we're going to lose half of that for the remainder of two thousand twenty-four.
I would rather see us at a comfortable state, you know, and make sure that we're in a better seat in the long run versus going through and then in the end, and like you said, we may have to go up past that extra ten cents in November.
Yeah, we never know what, you know, we're just hoping and we're educated, yes, I guess at this point.
Yeah, so I, I would just, that's what, that's my ideas on that one. And I hope that, I think it, it's hard no matter what it is.
Yeah, it is. It's hard to do.
Forty dollars, I think, is extremely feasible. It allows us to figure out, you know, budgeting for households. I think people can accommodate that.
And that's the highest month of the year, I think, the most usage, which is usually January. Our highest usage, usage months of January, February. February is a shorter month, so the dollar amount is a little less in February.
Yeah, because a hundred ninety-two CCS, that's a lot. Because I was like, we use a hundred and one running our furnace at seven.
Yeah, it depends on the, the house, insulation and size of the house and all of that. Everybody's going to be a little bit different, you know, on the amount. But when you look at all, majority of the utility goes for houses of average size, you know, three bedrooms, fifteen hundred square foot, something like that. They use anywhere between one fifty and two hundred.
And that's all I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Mr. Schuh?
I have nothing. Steve, I've answered my questions.
Steve, the fluctuation and variance in the supply changes, does that affect the delivery rate?
No. The only thing that affects the delivery rate is operations and maintenance.
That's it?
Yeah. If we feel that we're not collecting enough money to do the operations and what we need to do, then the delivery rate will increase also. And prices of materials have went up from twenty nineteen to today, it's twenty twenty-three. The gas meter, household gas meter, in twenty nineteen, I was paying sixty-eight dollars. Now I'm paying a hundred and fifty dollars.
Still having supply chain issues as well?
Yeah, yeah. Anything that you order over twenty-five meters is probably, and it's hard to believe, is twenty-four months out. Wow. That's a tough, even said, that's an issue we're having right now is how we keep inventory. You know, we're looking to do inventory now, two years down the road. Anode, which is a cathodic protection component, in twenty nineteen, I paid seventy-eight dollars for an anode. They're two hundred dollars right now. So the, you know, that's where the delivery comes in, you know. Right now, we're okay with our delivery. Everything looks good with our delivery charge. Once we get this balanced out here with the supply, then you'll have a real good idea of what we're doing. Be able to, the books will be a little bit easier to understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, Council, I just have one, one more thing I wanted to mention. So we're also working very hard to keep our internal costs as low as possible. So for example, none of our enterprise employees, including the gas department, are getting any cost of living investments next year. So this is not going into employees' pockets by any stretch of the imagination. And every dollar that we collect that can go into capital improvements will go back into the system for the benefit of the community. So I just wanted to point that out. We're, Cheryl makes us get the best price attainable for everything. And I support her whole heart on that. Seriously, even like a pen, and I'm exaggerating a little bit, but even down to the thousand dollar and less range, we still require three quotes to ensure that we're getting the best pricing. So we're doing everything we can to, to spend wisely. We just wanted to point that out.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I was going to mention that.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay. You're the man. But people have. But people have to understand that not only are we city council people, we're consumers.
Yes.
You know, I've got a huge building downtown that it's gonna hit. But this is a difficult time for municipalities. It's a difficult time for private business to, you know, with these expenses. But in order to make sure that we have a good gas supply, citizens need to understand this is a necessity. It's not something that we enjoy doing. We're not flippant about increasing these. And you guys have done a great job pointing out the numbers to us. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two on our work session is city council vacancy applicant interviews. The order in which you are going to be interviewed is the order in which your resume was received. So I'm just gonna be, I'm gonna give you the, um, maybe explain the process, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But I am going to give you the names of the candidates in the order that their resumes were received. First, it was Erin Ogletree, Derek Thomas Senior, Carl Rusty Goodall, Joe Bonato, Ashley A. Ryan, Carlos Lopez, Allison England, and Andrew McInerney. Is that correct, sir? McInerney?
It's actually McErney.
McErney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All righty. All right, Mr. Downs, if you want to give us a...
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Description.
Council members, you bet. Good morning. So, once the interviews are conducted, we are going to have everybody sequestered. We're going to have all the applicants, aside from Ms. Ogletree, who will be the first up. We have everybody in offices throughout City Hall so they can't hear the questions that are being asked. But, but once the interviews are done, then you will all be given a ballot form with all eight names on, on the ballot form, okay? In the first round of voting, you're each going to vote for three people, three of the eight. And you're going to sign your ballots, please make sure you sign your ballots every single time you cast a ballot. I'll try to remind you, but you need to sign your ballots. So you're going to vote for three, and you must please cast all three votes. You can't vote for one, you can't vote for two, you have to vote for three, okay? Once the, once that round, once you've cast your ballots, Steve and Kimberly are going to gather up your ballots, and they're going to take them in the conference room, and they're going to add them up, okay? And from that, the winner, and give me the results, especially who has survived to the next round. And in the first round of voting, it's going to be those people who garner three votes, okay? So, any, however many there will be, because there are six of you, each voting for three people, there are going to be 18 votes cast for the eight applicants. Don't know how many are going to survive, but those people who garner three votes are going to be the ones who will advance to the next round. I will tell you the names of the people who are advancing, of course, so you know who you're going to vote for, you know, in the next round. But I'm not gonna tell you the vote totals and, and who got how many votes. And incidentally, before I get too far ahead of myself, we're not going to be revealing that this morning. Who voted for who or how, we're not going to reveal that this morning. There will be undoubtedly a quorum request, then we'll ask for that information. And we will give anyone who makes such a request copies of all your ballots, right? So that, it's not gonna be announced this morning, but it will be announced, and it will be a matter of public record. Don't want you to think it's not going to be, or anyone in the audience, it is going to be a matter of public record. That's why we're, you know, of course, having you sign your ballots. So after round one of the voting, then however many people there are that are going to be going on round two, from those names, you're gonna be given another ballot, and you're gonna be voting for two people, okay? This time, you each cast two votes, or vote for two people. And we'll get, of course, sign your ballots. And then we're gonna do the same thing. Steve and Kimberly are gonna take the votes in, and they're gonna tally them up. And in that round of voting, it's still going to be whoever gets three votes is going to advance, okay? And the, the first rendition of my memo to you guys said, two votes, whoever gets two votes will advance. And I sent you an updated memo this week, and I hope you all got it. So in the second round of voting, there are gonna be 12 votes cast. And so if there are, let's say, four people who advance to the second round, and 12 votes cast, then it's very likely that all four people would advance if you only were doing two, right? If you had only done two votes to advance. So that's why I, you know, as I was doing the math, I figured that it should require three. So second round of voting, you will each get two votes, and it will be those people who get three votes who will then go on to the next round. And I should say at this point, if there is only one person who advances at that point, then I suppose the process will be over with, and you'll have a winner. We're not looking at like, at this sport, the greatest vote getter, but if there's only one person got that many votes, then, and I don't think that'll happen, but in any event, I just, just wanna make that clear. So Steve and Kimberly will give me the vote totals, and I will tell you who the people are, who are going to advance, okay? From the names, how many people will have gotten three votes. And then we're going to be going to what I am hoping is going to be the final round of voting, okay? May not be, but I hope it will be. And the final round of voting, you're each going to get one vote. And so you'll be given a ballot, and you're each going to cast one vote for the people who now remain. Hopefully, it's gonna be down to just two or three names, but you're gonna cast one vote. And you'll sign your ballot. Steve and Kimberly will take them in, and count them up. And if you, the, the majority vote getter at that point is going to be your selection, okay? Whoever gets the, the most votes. Now, there are six of you, and so there may be a tie. And what I propose, or there may be, you know, there may be a tie. So if there is a tie, I suggest that you all take time to discuss, you know, and, and I know that's gonna be awkward, because if you're advocating for one person over another, you're kind of doing so, you know, propping up one to the detriment of the other, you may not have anything you wanna talk about. But I would afford you that opportunity. So if there's a tie, then we wanna take one more vote to see if the tie can be broken. And if it is, great, you have your winner. If it's not, and we still have a tie, then we are going to do the very technical, very scientific ping pong ball. Exactly, ping pong ball drop. And that is, Steve is going to write the initials of the finalists on ping pong balls, one ping pong ball. But it's, it's all we can think of, right, to break the tie. So, sorry, I know, I wish it was something else. But it's, it's, so he'll write the initials, you know, one ping pong ball per finalist, and put them in a container, right? And then he'll, he'll put them in a container, and have the mayor draw, you know, and reach in, not be able to look, reach in, draw a ping pong ball, and that is your new, your new council member. I hope it doesn't come down to that. But if it does, it does, and that will be the tiebreaker.
And Mayor, Council, I just, just, as silly as the ping pong ball thing sounds, I get it. However, as a former election official for 10 years, election code says that if there's a tie at the election, you would draw by random lot. And I've seen everything from flipping a coin to drawing the high card. We like to ping pong ball, drawing, ball, ball drawing. It's fun and fair, and, and it'll get us there.
Let's hope it doesn't come to that.
I know. But, but any questions? Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody, I'll go last. No questions? Is there a time limit for each interview?
Well, I, I recommend that we do 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
There are rates, so that would be two hours, if, if that's acceptable. I don't...
Yeah, Mayor, Council, I think that would be good to establish that time limit. What I'll do is set the timer here for 15 minutes, so it beeps, and we do wanna try to stick to that, just in fairness to all the candidates. So that's the same opportunity.
Would there, would, I have, do you have a question?
No, go ahead.
If we're going to establish a time limit for the interview,
Sure.
I think that we have seven questions. I think there should be a two-minute time limit for the answer. I mean, if, if everybody knows that upfront, then it is fair, and then we can, we can get every question to every person.
I, I think that's a good idea. I would just say, the applicants probably should be mindful of the fact that they don't wanna take too much time answering any one question. But, but sure, we could try to keep track of how long the answers are going, and try to warn people that it's gone on for a while, and that we may wanna move on.
And then if there's, then my thought is, if there's any need for follow-up, it would exist at the end of that 15-minute period. I mean, I think that'd be the most fair thing to do.
Say that again, please.
If there's any follow-up questions, we would, the, those follow-up questions would remain until the end of the 15-minute period, which isn't gonna be much time, to be honest.
Right.
I, I have a question statement. So each one of these individuals are different. Their experiences are different. Is it necessary that we ask each applicant every question? Because some of them might not be pertinent to that candidate. Or you feel that's the fairest way to do it?
I do think it's the fairest way to do it. And because if you, you know, think, well, this question probably doesn't apply, then an applicant may feel like they didn't get a first check, right? And they say, well, why did they ask that question? Well, I mean, they're not gonna know, because they're all gonna be sequestered. But when they look at the interviews later on or whatever, it's like, why was I gonna ask that question? So I think, to be fair, the questions should all be asked of each, each applicant.
Will all the applicants come back in here at one time?
Yes, Mayor, Council, after we're done with each round of voting, we'll invite the applicants in to be present for that announcement.
Okay.
And, and everybody, I think, after the interviews can come back in.
Yeah, absolutely. After we get, that's a good point, Les. After we get to the interviews, everyone's welcome to come back in here and be here for the remainder of the voting and discussion.
Okay.
And I would ask the staff, Odd or Dona, and Steve, I, I think, have I forgotten anything or omitted anything?
Okay, all right, good deal.
So, any other questions?
I think the observation, I think if we are limited to 15 minutes and we go through every question, some questions are gonna be answered pretty quickly. I think that would be a chunk of time to be in.
Yes.
And Mayor, Council, just a quick recommendation, I wouldn't recommend holding applicants to two minutes for each question, because some questions might be, I think, your answer, and to Councilmember Williamson's point. But I will set the timer for 15 minutes, and we'll, we'll strive to, to stick with that timeframe for each applicant. Les and I will give a five-minute warning.
I'd like to make the suggestion, if I may, just for the, um, to ensure the tempo and the mood remain same, I'd like to suggest if Steve doesn't be the moderator that asks each question and tells the follow-up questions, if you find that acceptable, then...
I, I have no problem, Council.
What was your reason for that?
Well, just, it'll maintain the same mood and, um, the, that's right.
So get moody.
It'll maintain the mood and tempo of the, of the interview.
Right.
Because it, it becomes awkward when you each cycle through questions, I feel, I think. And then we can ask all the questions if necessary, if you find that...
Do you have any problems with that?
I don't.
Mr. Ruger, do you have?
Happy to do it.
Okay. One, one housekeeping chore. Because this is gonna take a while, I would suggest that this is for council more, this is for council and staff. If you need to take a break, do it in between the interviews.
Right.
Because we don't wanna stop between midterm on and the other.
And in general, anytime you need to use the restroom or take a break, please let the chair know, Mayor. And then that way, we can formally announce that and be on the same page.
All righty. All right, applicant, you're dismissed.
Get out, yeah, really, get, get out.
On the second floor, if you would.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good morning.
Staff down there can help you find the locations for the other...
We will shut the doors just for added layer protection. I would ask that, also, anybody online watching, welcome. Please, please refrain from texting any of the candidates or disclosing any of the discussion that happens in the meeting.
Our first candidate is Erin Ogletree, and she's going to appear remotely. Good morning. Are you there, Erin?
Hi, Erin, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we sure can. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Okay.
So did you hear the, some of the information given before we dismissed the, all the applicants? The ground rules, per se?
I did.
Okay, all right, so...
I did. I've been on for a while.
Okay, so Mr. Ruger's gonna be our moderator of Meet the Press. All righty, sir, take it away.
Okay, I'm starting the timer right now for 15 minutes. And the first question, how would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
That's a great question, and, and good morning, everyone. And I apologize for the technical difficulties, but I hope you can hear me all right. Sometimes I just didn't, to give you enough, on my side, I can hear some voices better than others, so I might need to ask you to restate the question. I think we have a good balance on city council of people who have been longtime residents and lifelong residents of Trinidad. So I think we have a lot of representation of, of every facet of Trinidad life, and I think that's good. I think literally and truly what I've seen the last four years, that we have got to do a better job, though, is engaging everyone in our decision-making process. And perhaps that would involve having conversations with a broad spectrum of people before we go into council meetings, knowing what the issue is that we're going to discuss. I've done that quite often when I know that it's a tricky issue. I've talked with people from all sorts of backgrounds to make sure that we know what everyone is thinking as best we can, and what they're hoping for for the city.
Okay, thank you. Question number two. City council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month, as well as reading packets prior to the meetings. How will this fit with your other commitments?
Well, I don't really have any. It fits fairly well. The last four years, I, I take the commitment very seriously. I read through the package. I ask questions of staff when I need to, and, and like I just said, if there's an issue that I know that is controversial in the city, I talk with people before the meeting to get a sense of, of what they think about it. And so that's, I, I don't have any problem thinking that I can fit this into my schedule. Every time that I've come to a meeting, I am really aware of the privilege of serving and that there are 9,000 people at least whose lives are affected by the decisions that city council makes. that city council makes.
Question number three. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member? And it's a two-part question. Have you served on a governing board of any type, nonprofit, church, et cetera, or as a leader in any organization?
The skills that I have are the skills that I've demonstrated the last four years, which are that I look for in preparing for a meeting and thinking through an issue, I look for what I think we will, we might miss in our analysis, in terms of how it's going to affect the city broadly. And so I spend time thinking that over. I'm sure that that's part of having a lawyer brain that never goes away, no matter if you're in practice or not. You're always looking for, what are we presuming here that may not be a fair presumption? What interests are at play that we need to take into account, or maybe shouldn't take into account, because they're not going to end up giving us the best decisions for the whole city? And as far as boards, I've served on several boards that are all made out in my city council application. I served in Trinidad before I was on city council, I was on the historic preservation commission and on creative districts. Before I moved here, I served on various boards as an attorney. I also was on my children's school board, and I would say that that experience was the most like what being on city council has been for me, because it was a group of people. We all had in our mind that we wanted the best thing for our kids' schooling, and we had to work together when we had differences. And so I think all of that is relevant. I think one of the things that I've enjoyed the most about being on city council is having to take into account points of view that I hadn't thought of. I learned that as a lawyer, that you have to understand, I don't think of us as opponents, I just want to paraphrase that or make that clear. We don't think of us as opponents on council, but we do come at things with different interests. And what I learned as a lawyer, that no matter how convinced you are that you are correct in your perspective, you really cannot adequately advocate for whatever issue you think is important. And once you totally understand and credit the other side, and what they, their concerns are as well, so all of that, I think, is all particularly relevant.
Great, thank you. Question number four. Please list three words you believe other members of any governing board or organization on which you have served would use to describe you or your participation in that organization?
Okay, three words to describe me?
Yeah, three words.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, three words you believe other members of any board you've served on would use to describe you.
Respectful, having integrity, and hardworking.
Great. Okay, so the fifth question out of seven. Based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as top priorities for us, and why?
Oh, well, I want to start with, I think we've done a great job the last four years working on infrastructure issues. That was something that was a great concern when I moved to Trinidad, because people would tell me that there were issues with sewer and water, and so I think we've done a really good job of that. I think where we need to, would need to focus, where this council needs to focus, is economic development. I strongly feel like that is what is making a difference, will make a difference going into the future. I've always felt like Trinidad has a lot of economic trauma, because it's been through so many up and down cycles, and when we are in a difficult time like we're facing now, or we don't, we're not flush with cash as we have been, there's a very real temptation in Trinidad to just kind of, well, we'll just lay low for a while and see what comes next. And we can't do that, there's too much on the line. We've all worked way too hard for the city not to keep working on trying to build our economy, and to make, continue making Trinidad a place that is a good place to raise a family. That's something I've always felt like we don't stress enough. Sure, we're great for tourists and recreation and all those things, but we've got to help people understand that this is a great place to raise a family, it's a strong, strong community. And what we think that I love about it are that everywhere you go, you see someone you know, and you have a background with them, and they know you, and that is just incredibly valuable. Other things, I would say, I really want to see the Rhythm Walk project continue, I think that would be transformative for the downtown area, for residents and visitors alike. I think it will be a really useful place to gather and to have events. Hopefully, beautification, I know this is something that I, Mayor Greego and I have talked about, that we've got to help people understand that the way that their property presents is taken into account by all of us, not just visitors, but people who live there. And when it's not taken care of, it's depressing. And so I'd really like people to have more of a sense of how important it is, how they present, the land that they live on, or the businesses they work at or own, to the success of the city. I'm looking through some other things that I had written down. We need to have continued oversight of our infrastructure to make sure that it continues to improve or continues to stabilize, maximizing our assets, like our golf course, and helping the animal shelter to stabilize and become something that people are then really proud of, and want to be part of and volunteer at. So those are some of the top of my thoughts for me.
Awesome, and I believe that actually answers the next question, but certainly I'll read it and give you the opportunity to add anything. What are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing for both locals and tourists?
More options for children. I think our children, I'm starting to see people are becoming more engaged with how important it is that we focus on them, but that's got to be huge. Children who are out playing in our parks with their parents and their friends and laughing, that not only benefits them, their families, our communities, but people who come to town who see, oh man, there's people out there having fun together. I was driving back west on the bus from Port Bari, I was staying, and there are these huge fields that people play at, and tracks that they run around, and kids play soccer, and I was, it was really encouraging and invigorating to me to see that, because I was like, we need more of that. We need our children to know that they are seen and treasured, and that they are the future of the city. And I think they've just kind of been lost for a while. I think that would affect also drug use, because children who are well-attended and cared for are less likely to get into drugs. So that is largely what I think would improve Trinidad. I think also having a varied number of businesses, coming back to economic development. We need businesses that are beyond what we have now, so that people have a reason to stay and not start up to port along. We've got to figure out, maybe do a marketing study to figure out exactly what people are buying when they go to town, so that whoever would open that business would know that there's a lot of demand towards that thing that they are providing.
And we're at two minutes?
Be a better support to our businesses. Okay, we could be a better support to the businesses that we have, being more coordinated with the Chamber of Commerce, which seems to be improving, and the work that it's doing, and promoting the businesses that are in town, I think would be really encouraging for them and helpful for them. Really communicating well with them, I think they need to be doing a very good job with that, that we can continue to improve with that. And continuing to promote space to create as a place for community gatherings, that's been very encouraging to me, because I guess some degree of work in that, and without them knowing how that would work out, and it seems to be a really needed asset for Trinidad. So that's my answer to that.
Alright, great, we're one minute left, but the last question is pretty short, at least, I hope. Does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something particular that you hope to accomplish while serving on the council? And why is serving on the council important to you?
My, when I first was on city council, the mayor asked me that question, and my answer remains the same. I've always felt like my purpose in being on council is to help Trinidad to continue to increase its professionalism towards the world, towards the state. Our staff is wonderful, I have a great respect for what they do, and I'm very aware that basically, as a city, we do, we do through them. We don't do anything really in particular other than that, so I have grown, grown in my respect. I'd say a personal reason would be that I am really prone to enjoy working with all of you, and will miss it if that's not an option. I think we have worked really well as a team. I think we will continue working very well as a team, and personally, that is very gratifying to me. I love the city, so the personal reason's got to do with continuing to push for it to become everything it can be, and as beautiful, and with people who have as much pride in it as possible, because it deserves that.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of the questions. Just one more item for the record, just a verification. Can you please state your address for the record and the length of time you've lived in Trinidad?
Sure. I live at 615 West Palado Avenue in Trinidad, and I moved here, this is interesting, and show it that, I moved to Trinidad in 2014, December 2014, but I moved into my house on January 11th, 2015. So that would be eight, nine, nine years. Nine years ago today, I moved into my house.
Great, and city charter specifies that you have to be a resident of Trinidad for at least a year, so just wanted to verify for the records that Erin Ogletree does meet the requirements to be placed in this position.
Not everybody gave us that information in their application, so that's why I asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thank you also. And that is it.
Thank you.
And Erin, you're welcome to stay on at this point and listen to the other interviews, since you already know the questions. And I'll turn it over to the mayor.
I'm going to go ahead and sign off. I'm going to go ahead and sign off, if someone could give me a heads up, if there's a time that I should get back on, send them, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll shoot you a text if we need you back on.
Or when we're done.
That would be great.
Okay, absolutely. It ought to be about an hour and forty-five minutes, not counting breaks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
Steve, just a question, would you want somebody else to do the timing, because you've got your hands full?
Yeah, you want me to do the timing?
Yeah, let's get this start-stopping.
Oh, you have a five-minute one or a two-minute one?
Five.
Five, okay, good.
Can I go ahead and get the next one?
Please. Thomas, if you want. Exactly. Yeah, that's right, no review. Oh, Audrey had asked a question, and it is, do we know who's on the link? Like, okay, I'm not sure. What's a public meeting? We don't need to know, I was just, I was kind of curious.
What if some of the other?
Right, right. The podium, if you would, please.
Come on down.
Get more of that.
Come on down. The price of your...
Mayor, could we have a room, please?
Yeah.
We have a couple of people that we can't, we have, what is that, M6500?
Yeah, there's three people on the call who, we don't have their names, and it would be good if we could have them identified, just for the integrity of the process. So if M6500, if you can identify yourself, please. Well, I think we just want to ensure that, you know, we're not, like, no bias.
If they don't identify themselves, I would...
Yeah, I agree, I mean, it's a public meeting, you would be identifiable here if you were at a public meeting.
Yeah, you would. It's, it's more kind of powerless to ensure...
I can be removed. I can remove. I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. I think we move forward, and we'll take records of everybody who is on the call.
Taking every precaution we can to make this appear, rest it.
Give my terminal a comment.
Yeah, yeah, right. Take a deep breath.
Yeah.
Breathe. Alrighty. Mr. Ruger is going to give you the questions.
Okay, and Derek, thanks for being here. Just to recap, we're going to set a timer for fifteen minutes, and we have seven questions for you today, and we'll give you a five-minute warning. Okay, so the first question is, how would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
By listening to constituents, listening to complaints, following up on complaints, just being attentive.
Okay. The next question is, city council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month, plus certainly time spent interacting with residents and constituents, as well as reading packets prior to the meetings that we have formally. How will this fit in with your other commitments?
I would fit perfectly, I mean, right now I sit on the Historic Preservation Commission, so it's the same thing.
Great.
We follow up, read our packets, and I mean, we don't have two meetings a month.
Right.
So, but...
And works that, just so you know, in answering that question, regular council meetings are the first and third Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., and then there's work sessions the second and fourth Monday at 3:00 p.m.
And the kids only serve their board.
Okay. Once every ten years.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Only on snow days.
Yeah. Okay, next question. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member? And it's a two-part question. Have you served on a governing board of any type, or as a leader in any organization?
I have served on the Historic Preservation Commission. I have been on student government throughout college. I'm a father of nine, so...
Nine?
Yes, ma'am. My oldest is twenty-five, my youngest is five. So I am very attentive, and seeing their needs, and making sure that they are good citizens, so I guess, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I'll read it for you one more time. What skills and experience do you have that would believe, that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
So being attentive, listening, quick responses, studying, I love to study. I'm introverted, so if you throw anything written in front of me, I'm going to read it three times over, four times over, try to figure it out and try to get it done. I've always finished top 15% of my class. And the wherewithal to keep it going and everything.
Okay. So question four is, please list three words that you believe other members of any governing board or organization such as the HPC on which you've served would use to describe you or your participation, or your participation in that organization?
Attentive, thoroughness, and eagerness.
What was the first one, sir?
Attentive.
Next question. Based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as the top priorities for us and why?
Marijuana.
Explain that.
Well, marijuana has done a lot for the city and I know with the taxes, you guys taking away the late fees, that was a good step. Last year planning the halfway to 420 or 420, I think that was a great idea. But we need to, we need to go a step further and be more supportive of the marijuana industry because we need to bring people in and we need to figure out how. Do we, when I first heard of Trinidad, it was like Trinidad is the, what's that place over in Europe?
Amsterdam.
Amsterdam. It's Amsterdam of.
Not sure how I knew.
My thoughts. It's the Amsterdam, Amsterdam of the United States and the weed mall of America. There's 30-something shops here. Okay, but where are people consuming? You know, why don't we have consumption clubs? Why don't we have bakeries or things like that where people could go in and eat marijuana edibles and stuff? You know, consume and bring people in. If New Mexico is legalizing and you could get two ounces there, I mean, let's go a step further and actually go the way of Amsterdam and have consumption clubs. That's one of the big things that I think we could do.
Great, okay. Next question. What are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing to both locals or tourists?
So I would like to see this cedar and pine redeveloped, opened up. I'd like to see some, maybe some open markets there, some basketball courts, tennis courts. Maybe right there by the Amtrak station, maybe we could do a founder's statue or a legend's statue, something to bring people, I mean, there's people passing that on that Amtrak and if they see these nice things right there, like we could bring in tourists, we could bring in new people. But part of that is we have to have housing for them, so.
Okay, and then last question. Does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council and why is serving on the council important to you?
Yes, I think it was 2020, 2020, 2020 and I came and ran for the special election and I didn't have any government boards. So it did show me that I had to be on government boards and I, like I said, I joined the Historic Preservation Commission right after that. I would like to see some kind of coalition of council, fire and rescue, police, maybe the drug rehabs, anybody, all these great community leaders to come together and figure out. We had a 2018 report on homelessness from a company off of Denver in Trinidad and it seems like since 2018, we've only got more homeless, more drug problems. So I'd like to get a coalition of all these people together and figure out what we can do to stop this.
Okay, that was the last question, but one last follow-up. Can you please for the record verify your address and the length of time you've lived in Trinidad?
Yes, my address is 229 East Strong Avenue. I have lived in this beautiful city of Trinidad for now nine and a half years.
Great. Okay, so we, our records do indicate that Derek does meet the eligibility requirements for this seat. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Derek.
Derek, you're welcome to hang out for the rest of the interviews and.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Can anybody need a break?
I may look after the next one or two.
We've been down in a lot of coffee.
Say, let's split it. Four and then take a break.
Do you want to go and get the next?
Oh, make us do four.
Yeah, wow.
Okay.
Same driver.
Next applicant, it was Carl Rusty Goodall.
Thank you.
Something comes in and we're like.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah, it was like five minutes.
I can say that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's right. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Mayor, council staff, looking for the opportunity?
Absolutely.
So Mr. Ruger's going to give you the questions.
Absolutely. So I'll ask seven questions. We are going to set the timer for 15 minutes and Les will give you a five-minute warning. So the first question is, how would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
Well, I think it's a process of being fair and it falls down to a person's morals. It should be our moral views to make sure you're fair to everybody here.
Okay, great. All right, second question. City council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month, as well as reading packets prior to the meetings and of course, interacting with residents and serving them. How will this fit in with your other commitments?
That's been a nice part of when I served on planning and zoning and city council before, being a retired person, I think my record spoke for itself in the time I spent at the state capitol on important matters like now the legislative sessions or fight for the opioid settlement. I always made myself available and being retired, I will continue to do so to attend every opportunity to go and represent the city of Trinidad.
What skills and experience do you have that you would, that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member? And have you served on a governing board of any type or as a leader in any organization?
So I did, I think, close to five years on planning and zoning, four years seated as an official on city council. I sat on, oh, the Trinidadian Blues Fest Board, that is the executive director of that for maybe 10 years. I was part of the Chamber of Commerce. Jeez, it sounds like a lot when you look at it that way. I think those skills I've proven have served me well as a council member and as a planning and zoning member.
Do you want to talk specifically about those skills and what you might bring to the table?
Well, I was on planning and zoning when we were writing some, well, we completely rewrote the ordinances, re-zoned the whole town, part of the marijuana industry when it was coming in, set regulations for grows. On city council, I was fortunate to be part of the Space to Create and making that come to fruition. The funding to help with, might be a sore spot getting Noah's Ark built for a facility and also for the purchase of the Crazy French Ranch and the new state park.
All right, question four of seven. Please list three words you believe other members of any governing board or organization on which you have served would use to describe you or your participation in that organization?
Loud. That's probably number one. I've been told by officials here in the city that I have an amazing memory to facts and I don't know if opinionated is the right word, but I have a strong, man, the word is just not coming to me, conviction. Yes.
Based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as top priorities for us and why?
Well, I think transitioning to tourism being a major priority is, has to be high on our list to pick up the funds that have been vacated by the marijuana industry decreasing. I think that's very important for the city and should be a top priority for city council to look at. The other stuff is the continued infrastructure, bringing it up to standards, it's been so long since it was addressed that, you know, we started that process when I was here and it's important to see that continue.
Okay, and that segues into question six. What are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing to both locals and tourists?
You know, that's a tough one between locals and tourists because we have a lot of people here that have been here long-term and they like things the way it has been and it's a touchy transition from keeping them happy to keeping the next generations happy and promoting tourism. I think that it's important that we keep moving towards widening streets, putting in more bike lanes and addressing the needs of the tourism side of it, but at the same time, improving our local streets and making them more accessible for people that have been here for a long time so that they're not put out by the amount of extra traffic that comes into this town.
Okay, and then last official question. Does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council and why is serving on the council important to you?
Well, I think anyone that comes to city council with a private agenda, I'm going to do this, learns pretty quickly. There are seven members to a council. It is not what your opinion and what you want. So number one is to continue working with every member of city council to move forward in a united goal to make things better for the city of Trinidad.
Okay, that's the end of the formal questions, but just one last housekeeping thing. For the record, can you verify your address and the length of time you've lived in Trinidad?
1701 Santa Fe Trail and I moved to Trinidad in 1990.
And Mr. Goodall does meet the eligibility requirements for a moment.
If not, y'all changed something since I was here. What y'all got? Any follow-ups?
Nope.
No, good. Thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome to hang out from here if you'd like.
Thank you.
One more. One more.
Yeah.
You can split.
You're not getting it, are you?
You're west.
Don't know.
Oh, man.
Do not hesitate.
It's okay.
I've never seen you in a band.
I'm sorry.
I just, hi. Morning, Joe.
Morning, Joe. So, morning, man of the mayor and city council. If I like to say one thing before we get started, if that's okay with you, I just want to say congratulations to our new mayor. I haven't seen you since the election. Mr. Schu for being elected again to council. Mr. Williamson for being elected to council and Mayor Protan. Mr. Chiu for being elected to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Ruger's going to ask some questions.
All right, Joe. First question. How would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
I think that's up to my experience on council. I dealt with a lot of things that came up with the city. I believe that right now we have a good council in place. I believe that they could recommend things, not only the city manager, but also Mr. Towns, that we could keep up along with the way we're going. So, yeah, that's what I would do.
Great. Okay, second question. City council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month, as well as reading packets prior to the meetings and certainly interacting with residents from time to time. How will this fit in with your other commitments?
Well, I wouldn't be here this morning if I couldn't give 100% or 110% to this council. I'm disabled. I have a lot of time to spend at this council, with the city manager and the city staff to talk over problems that we might have and to look, to drive us into the future. So it's a, it's not a place where I'll be situated. I want to be here to show that I want to represent the city of Trinidad and people of the city of Trinidad and also 110% that I'll be there. I'll be there.
Great. Okay, question three. What skills and experiences do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member and have you served on a governing board of any type or as a leader in any organization?
I believe that was asked at the forum, like I am, or at the chamber interview. I have served on many boards of the city of Trinidad and I think that these boards are very important for us because we rely on, on these boards to give us help. We, as a city manager, I mean, as a city council, have to open our ears and listen to these people that are on these boards. But to me, we're having a hard time trying to fill these boards. And I just hope that people of the city of Trinidad, especially younger and middle-aged guys that have, that want to see the city succeed, bring their question, bring their answers to us and see what we could do with all we have to show, okay.
Okay, question four. Please list three words you believe other members of any governing board or organization on which you have served would use to describe you or your participation, or your participation in that organization?
Well, I think the hardest board, I really didn't sit on this board, was the chamber board because there was a lot going on. The chamber board years passed was really in the hole and after a couple elections there, there was other people that were on that board and a new president that brought out the chamber. I mean, they solved their problems with being out of debt and stuff like that. And that's why I say with me sitting on the council, I know all of you for a long time. You know how I speak, you know how I, how I feel and you know how I stand. If I believe that something isn't. And that's why I say with me sitting on the council, I know all of you for a long time. You know how I speak, you know how I feel, and you know how I stand. If I believe that something isn't gonna be right, I vote with this heart. I don't vote because of the most favorable vote. It's just like a lot of things that came up when I was on council. There's a lot of things that I disagreed with. And right now, I think we're seeing what's happening in our town right now. I think all of you know what I'm talking about. I'm not gonna mention it, but I think a lot of things, Aaron, you looked at me like you're saying, "Well, I'm different." Madam Mayor knows what I'm talking about. And now we're paying the price. So let's all work together as a council, work together as the staff, work together with these boards, work together with Mr. Towns. If there's any questions or any doubt in our minds, just bring it out. Just don't hold it back. These people of the city of Trinidad wanna hear what we represent. So my voice will be heard, I guarantee you. My voice will be heard and I'm left in.
Joe, are there three words you would use that others would describe you as?
Well, once in a while, that could be on me. That's more than once in a while. Probably, you know, I'm a peaceful man. I don't bother nobody. Nobody bothers me. And I told you, I'm disabled, I have a lot of time. So a lot of people, I think when the election was done, I kinda finished with seven hundred and some votes. And I kinda questioned that in my mind. I said, "What happened?" But when I first got elected on council, there was a lot of older people then that lived here. Now both older people have either passed away or they moved. But I still have faith in the people of the city of Trinidad.
Okay, next question. Based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as top priorities for us and why?
Well, I think this council's most of the first priorities is in Trinidad. That's our streets, our infrastructure, our housing. And we, all three of those are very problematic because they're so hard to solve. And people don't realize that it takes a lot of money, a lot of money, to fix those streets. You know, it's hard. And people have to be patient with council and our city staff. We do our best to try to put priorities on streets, on housing, stuff like that. Our homeless people, what do we do about our homeless people? That's a question nobody knows. And that's why we have a shortage of housing. But I do believe, like a few folks, I do believe, I got here in the President's Library, I seen two homeless people there. And this was before the election. And I talked to these two people. And I said, "What would you do if you had a place to stay in? A nice little apartment or something?" And you know what they're going, "Mr. Plano, we can't do that." I said, "Why? We've been on the streets so long. That's the only way of life I know." Can you do that? That's the only life, you know, that way, so. That's a problematic thing. I just hope you can look into that.
What are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing to both locals and visitors?
Well, one thing I always like to say, I gotta give the city staff credit and to the businesses in our downtown. Those business people try hard. If you look at it when you go downtown, their sidewalks are clean, their displays in their windows are nice. That's a plus for Trinidad. That's a plus for Trinidad. We have, we have people on the city that put their flowers out in front of the stores, keep care of the flowers. Those are main attractions, main attractions to get these people in here. We gotta also observe and try to put out Fisher's Peak, State Park. We got the Trinidad Lake up there, another state park. We got the cleanest water there is. We got the cleanest air there is. But we gotta reach out, guys. Sorry, my language on that. But we gotta reach out. We can't sit on our phones. We gotta reach out for people and say, "Hey, wanna come to Trinidad? This is what we have to offer." If we don't reach out to somebody, they're not gonna come to Trinidad. What can you offer these businesses and stuff? Well, maybe we could give them some kind of break on utilities or something on water. And also what I always wanted to say is one thing about, about the housing. And that's it is, you have to really look at this very closely. You look at maybe the developer who's gonna wanna try and develop out here on North Avenue or wherever it's at. There's a lot of things we've pushed out there, college. And that is, what kind of land is up there? Is this land in the county? Is this land in the state? Who is gonna be responsible for stubbing in electricity, for stubbing in the water? Those are a lot of things.
We're at five minutes, I'm sorry for interrupting, sir, I just wanna give everybody...
Okay, is that all, Mr. Towns?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's all.
One more question.
One more question.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's for me.
Last question. Does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something particular you hope to accomplish while serving on city council? And why is serving on city council important to you?
Well, the first question I should ask you, there's a lot of things that... I don't carry no personal vendettas against nobody. I don't, if somebody gets upset with me, I don't go back and test this and tell me everything else about this. I just wanna be respected. If you wanna talk to me, talk to me in a tone of voice that we can both communicate. If you tell me, you know, you're very rude to me, I don't want this.
Oh, so then basically, what, is there something particular you hope to accomplish on council? And why is being on council important to you?
Well, you know, something I wanna accomplish is like I say, the way to just work together and try, people have always called me about, about these roads, about everything else like that. It's just, we have to come up with a solution. You know, like I say, the city of Trinidad has to apply for more grants. The more grants we give, the better it's gonna be. I had a gentleman tell me, you know, "Well, when the city applies for grants, they always give..." No, that's not true. So that's another thing that I have to do.
Great, last part, Mr. Towns? Why is serving on council important to you?
Serving on council, I just, I love this little city. I love the people in this little city. I know you, I know all of you that are sitting on council right now. I think the great council is sitting right there. And I think if I'm put in that chair, then I could greatly help all of you to come to a good decision.
All right, thank you, Joe. And then one last housekeeping thing. If you can verify your address and the length of time you've lived in Trinidad?
Well, I think they all know that question. I was a former and raised here in Trinidad. I live at three oh nine Garrett Street, that's behind the movie theater.
Length of time you've lived in Trinidad?
Oh, you don't wanna know that, that'll tell my age.
Is it more than one year?
Well, it's about sixty-seven. Sixty, no, I was sixty-nine, I'm sixty-nine, I try to...
That is greater than one year. Okay, that is greater than one year. Joe, thank you, and you're welcome to hang out in here and listen to the other interviews at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall.
Thank you, sir.
If we're halfway through, I would request a short recess. How long, ten minutes?
Twenty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Is ten good?
Yeah, let's meet back here at ten twenty-five.
Ten twenty?
Roger.
He's generous once he lets us take a break.
I know.
I like this.
I know I do.
Why don't you look at me when you gavel? You said I love this.
I notice you're sitting back.
Why don't you look at me when you gavel? You said I love this.
You know, empty punches is bad. Getting serious now, we're proceeding on with our interviews. The applicant is Ashley A. Ryan.
Good morning.
Good morning. We're in our...
Yeah, there he is.
Moderating your coffee.
Keeps the golden punch.
Exactly.
Okay, Ashley. Mr. Ruger is going to give you seven questions. You have 15 minutes with a five-minute warning.
Okay, thanks for being here, Ashley. So the first question is, how would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
Well, communication is key. Right now, I feel like there is a portion of the residents here that feel like they're not being heard. They have no way to have their voice heard. We need a more open communication line. Meet them where they are. One of my ideas for getting input on tourism was maybe set up a booth in front of Safeway. People are going to go grocery shopping, say, hey, come talk to us about tourism. Come talk to us about whatever city problems. And if you need to have a more in-depth conversation, you can set those appointments then and there to have those conversations in the future.
All right, thank you. Question number two. City council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month, as well as reading packets prior to the meeting and certainly being a liaison with our residents. How will this fit in with your other commitments?
Well, my other commitments right now are work and the lodging tax advisory board, which I'm assuming if I get on the council, I will have a different role. I won't be able to be on that board as an active member. So I work and I go home. And my work is very supportive of my efforts here in Trinidad. They are willing to work with me on whatever I need to do. If I have something for council during the day, my hours at work are very flexible. I can go in at night. We're open till 10 p.m., so I can be on-site for work and still have some flexibility in what I can do for council.
Okay. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member? And have you served on a governing board of any type, such as the lodging tax advisory board, or as a leader in any organization?
Well, I am a communications person. I believe in open communications. For instance, in my work, I have an open-door policy. My people know they can approach me at any time. I seem to have one of those faces where people will just tell me things. Strangers tell me their life stories all the time, which is good if you need some information and learning how to communicate with people. That's important. But I have skills that I have developed in conflict resolution through work. I've had, you know, my employees, I have, there are 11 of us. 10 of us have been there for at least two years. So I have a very high employee retention rate at work. I always have, and that's because I make it clear that I want to communicate and I want to understand and I want to meet people on their level.
Okay. Please list three words you believe other members of any governing board or organization on which you have served would use to describe you or your participation in that organization.
That's difficult, isn't it? Reflection on yourself is always difficult. I would say patience, integrity, and leadership.
Okay. Based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as top priorities for us and why?
Top priorities? So I would definitely say infrastructure. We still have some work to do on the roads and parking. And if we're gearing up, we would like to have more visitors. We need to be sure that we're prepared for any visitors we might get. People do have a lot to say about specific potholes. You see that all the time. More communication. People, like I said, they don't feel like they are being heard or a lot of times I feel like they just don't know what's happening. Things that happen in the city take a long time. There's a lot of steps. There's a long process. People don't understand the process and so to them, nothing is happening when it is in the background. So more communication on updating people with, okay, here's what we did this month. I know it seems like, you know, here's our progress on this particular project. Just more communication, infrastructure.
Well, with that, next question is, what are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing to both locals and tourists?
Potholes. And, you know, we have some beautiful buildings that are worthy of it. If we could really encourage the people that own those properties to develop those properties, find out what other places are doing as far as incentives, maybe. We are doing great work. The Historic Preservation Commission does a fantastic job. I'm not sure how many of these owners really understand what it is that commission does and that that is available to them. So again, it pretty much roots down to communications and education.
Okay. And the last official question, and it's multi-part, so I'll read it. Feel free to ask me if you need anything reread. Does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council? And why is serving on the council important to you?
A particular goal? Why am I here? I don't know. I feel like I have a skill set that's beneficial. I see what's happening. You know, I'm on the Facebook, all the little chatters and stuff, and it breaks my heart when people have negative things to say, especially when it's something that is actually on the mind of the city workers or the city government. So I don't know. I just feel like if I can help, I should at least try to help.
Great. And then the first part of the question was, does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal?
Just personal growth. I really like Trinidad. I've gotten involved in the city since I joined the lodging tax advisory board. I see where we need help and I can feel like I can do that. So again, personal goal, just being part of a great thing happening and positive change in a place where I own my home, I don't plan on leaving, you know. This is where we want to be. So I want it to be the best possible Trinidad that it can.
All right. Well, that's the end of the official questions. And there's one last housekeeping question. Just for the record, if you could please verify your address and the length of time you lived in Trinidad.
My address is 714 West Kansas Avenue. I've been in Trinidad since July of 2016.
Great. And our records do indicate that Ashley does meet the eligibility requirements for the position.
Here, I'd request permission to ask you another follow-up question, if I may. I'll address it to Les first. I'd like to see if you would deem it a reasonable question. And if you deem it not to be a reasonable question, please don't answer it. What I wanted to ask you, Ashley, is in the first question, she said there's a specific group of people that doesn't feel heard. Without identifying any individual person, I was wondering if she could let us know what that group of people is.
Sure.
Okay, it'll be fine.
You know, I don't know that it's like an associated group. I don't know if you guys are on Facebook, but constantly in the chatter, there are people that are from here that say they don't hear us or we're trying to do this and nothing's happening. Just we need this and that.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ashley.
Ashley, you're welcome to hang out in here. Like for the other interviews.
You ready?
Yeah.
Mr. Lopez, Mr. Ruger is going... First of all, the interview is going to take, we're going to allow every applicant 15 minutes. You have a five-minute warning towards the end of your time, you'll know so you can pace yourself. And Mr. Ruger is going to ask the questions.
Okay. And there's seven questions total.
Seven questions.
Okay. Mr. Lopez, first question. How would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
Well, I think you'd have to inquire and put out inquiries for people to submit them so you can know what all of their concerns are. It's hard to know what everyone's thoughts are when they don't actively engage council. So I think you'd have to make sure that you have an open dais that is welcoming to everyone at any time that is applicable for a healthy dialogue.
Okay. Second question. City council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month, as well as reading packets prior to the meeting and certainly interacting with our residents. How will this fit in with your other commitments?
I think it will be just like it was the last time I was on this dais. Just you make time, you scalpel out time so that way you can afford to do things. You take the time to read, whether it's in the evenings, mornings, whenever you have time. Being self-employed, that affords me a lot more time because I'm not beholden to someone else's schedule.
Okay, great. Next question. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member? And have you served on a governing board of any type or as a leader in any organization?
Well, I think my time being on this dais before will definitely be one of those attributes to speak to. I was part of the dais that worked with CPW and other partners to get Fisher's Peak State Park here in Trinidad. We have worked with Governor Polis on multiple encounters and even not be on the dais, I've worked with other groups like Dan Gibbs from the Department of Natural Resources. Him and I have a personal relationship which I was able to establish when I was on the CML or municipal league's executive board, which I was elected to back in 2018. I've also been a part of this dais when we were working with the Trinidad Downtown Development Group for La Puerta, which is that business improvement district, which is now finally starting to show fruit or build fruit so that way we can have a new type of economic development here in Trinidad. I also started a program or working with the Department of Local Affairs on permanent supportive housing, which is now, I believe, a program that is being brought forward by the police department to work on our homelessness issue. I started this and was kind of challenged by a lot of people saying that I was doing something in a solo capacity when in reality I had vision. And I started to work on something before which is now being discussed and endorsed now by the police department. So we also had one of our healthiest budgets when I was on this council. I think that is something to be reflective upon, working as a partner with other members on this dais along with the city staff, making sure that we had a coffer that was not only healthy but saving. Trying to think what else. Also, on this board, I was able to start a youth program that is running financially sound on its own right now. that is running financially sound on its own right now. We did take monies from both the private and the public sector and were able to leverage them in the best capacity possible. So, that way now that facility is running without doing any kind of inquiries for financial help from the city other than the MOU that they are now probably asking for for the building itself. We were that pilot program because I knew when I was on council, other people may want to come forward and start a program that's a nonprofit and utilize public funds. We had to be the exemplary kind of group to show we can do it and then be financially solvent and not come back and completely ask for more funds again. So, I think we demonstrated that. I've demonstrated that. And I look forward to working with you all in the future.
Please list three words you believe other members of any governing board or organization on which you've served would use to describe you or your participation in that organization.
I would like to think that dedicated is one of those words. I would like to hope that resourceful is another one of those words and collaborative.
Okay. Based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as top priorities for us and why?
I think economic development should be one of our top priorities. I think the protection of our water should also be one of our top priorities. And also, making sure that some of the issues that are going to be impacting us down the road are also noted. So, for instance, our landfill. That is something that is going to be impactful for everyone in this community in a certain amount of time. And that's something that we need to be mindful of.
Okay. What are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing to both locals and tourists?
I think we need to have an engaging process that is going to get our locals energized about living here. I think we also need to make sure that for people that are coming here, that we create an environment that's hospitable for future business, whether it's retail, services industries, whatever it may be. Because I know it's not the council's job to make sure that businesses survive. But it is the responsibility of the council to give them a hospitable environment where they can thrive. And I think that is one of the key things that we need to do to make sure that people who either come here or are from here have reasons to stay here. We have lost some businesses recently here in Trinidad. There's a lot of jobs that are going to be taking whatever kind of disposable income that were being spent in our community that are probably going to be, well, it's not there. And we have got to be mindful of those types of families, their, you know, environment, I'm sorry, their economic impact as well and how we can make sure that Trinidad is a community that brings jobs here and keeps them here.
All right. And then last question, and there are three parts to it. So, let me know if you want me to repeat anything. But does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council? And why is serving on the council important to you?
I think everyone that's here has a personal reason to be here. They love Trinidad. They want to see it do better. I think we all do. Everyone on this dais has different means, though, of how we want to see it do better. And I think that's just a fair thing. And to have a diverse board is a healthy thing because if you have someone who maybe brings up a different point of view, then that might start us to have a new encounter for another type of opportunity. So, I do have a personal reason to be on this board. I love my hometown. It's the bottom line. I also have a business here, a retail application, that is dependent upon good decision-making by this dais that is therefore passed on to staff to make sure that we can thrive. So, that is my personal reason for the service. In terms of a particular goal, there's multiple goals. I mean, there were people that came to us and said throughout the campaign season, things they wanted. They wanted to see an indoor pool to help some of our, you know, members of the community that want to be able to have a year-round access. That is something that's a goal. It's not my goal, but it's for somebody else. There are so many things. The skate park is another one. I don't skateboard, but there are people out there who want their kids to have a healthy place to go that's safe. We also have to make sure that our state parks and our schools, especially Trinidad State, have good partners, knowing that when something happens, they have reliance upon a city staff and board that's going to say, yes, we support you. We want to make sure that you do well in conjunction with other agencies. So, that, those are some particular goals. Of course, I want to see outdoor recreation thrive and tourism be a founding economic driver for Trinidad right now because we've seen what happened with the mine recently. And I don't know if this is true, Erin, you can speak to this, if Evergreen Natural Resources is starting to have some reductions in force. That's not, okay, then that's what I heard at the hardware store and I felt so bad for people if that was the case. So, I'm glad to hear that that's not the case. But still, we have to make sure that we have a great portfolio to maximize and have a well-diversified community. And then last one was important, what was it?
Is why is serving on council important to you?
I want to make sure that everyone here, whether you're new to town or generationally from here, has opportunities to do well. That, I think, is a key thing. I feel that being a business owner on Main Street doing retail, I have fostered relationships with other people that are in a similar situation, whether they're from here or not from here. And we have each other's ears and concerns about how things are going. January is a very lean month for a lot of us businesses. I mean, I even talked to Carol from the tire shop this winter and she said that things weren't as good as they've been in the past. And that is a concern. We have to make sure that we're always maximizing opportunities and taking advantage of every penny that's possible. So, from a business owner perspective, I see things from a different lens. And I wish that the vantage point could be bestowed upon this dais so that way there's another kind of thoughtfulness. Karen, you have a business, granted it's service-minded. It's a different kind of business. You take care of people differently. For those of us that have to rely on sales, that is a whole other animal. And I think my seat right there will bring that kind of perspective to this dais to help guide and shape policies, as well as mending budgets.
Five minutes. All right. Well, that's the end of the formal questions. One last housekeeping question, Carlos. For the record, can you just verify your address and the length of time you've lived in Trinidad?
108 West Third Street is my home residence. And I have been back in Trinidad since May of 2013.
And our records do indicate that Mr. Lopez meets the requirements for appointment to the vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos. Okay. Second to last is Allison England.
Good morning.
Sing it.
The dogs will start howling. It's not a, when I'm in church, everybody moves away from me.
Good morning. I'll go and come in again.
I predicted that.
Hi, everybody.
You know, we've got a prediction. We are going to be greeted that way.
Yeah.
It could be louder, but Erin, I won't, I won't.
Hi, everybody. Frank, nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
It's great to see you. I'm glad you're here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning.
Ms. England? Yes. You're going, we're giving each applicant 15 minutes. We're going to give you a five-minute warning so you'll know to pace yourself. Mr. Ruger is going to ask the questions and Mr. Downs is going to time you.
So, it's really like a New York audition. So, you know, I'm just going to do this.
I'm not going to tell you if that's going to help or hurt you.
It doesn't matter. I want to hear what you, what's interesting to you. Okay.
You don't have to dance till question six.
Have to.
So, the first question, Allison is, how would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
The needs of all citizens are represented on city? You mean people that are here in council with us?
Our residents. How would you ensure that we're, yeah, meeting all of our residents' needs?
And we're residents, so all of us. Right. I'll tell you what comes to my thought right away. It's listening. Because what I see in Trinidad is that we don't listen. We interrupt. It's something that I work on in my business training. It's something that people... I was just feeling emotional about it because we did matriarchs with the Insomniac at the theater last night. And it was amazing to hear these women of Trinidad share and be listened to. And just as an outsider, and I don't mean that in a, like I'm less, but I see that we don't listen. And we listen with always already listening. I mean, as Erin is speaking, and Thurman's talking to me, or Manny, or Frank, I already have an answer, so I'm not listening. And I think citizens feel that they have the council in with them if they are heard. And I understand that it's hard when they're yelling at you. Except I have been yelled at for a year with people at the theater. And when I get quieter and I just listen, that goes down and they feel that I perceive them. I think this is the greatest gift we can give because when we get it and we're in their world, it lands with them and they feel safe and they want to work with us. That would be my intuitive response to that. Do you want me to say something else?
No, that's good.
Frank, Frank's just did this. Watch that eyebrow. Come on, man.
Okay. Second question. City council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month, as well as reading packets prior to the meeting.
What type of packet? Chocolate or?
Yeah, exactly. But that's all the things you're considering. So, and plus, of course, interacting with residents. How will this fit in with your other commitments?
Yeah. This is a really important question and I'm really glad you're asking it. The theater demands a lot. What I'm trying to do right now is move them into self-service mode, empower them to run, so I'm not like this. If you need me, I'm here. You know, I see all work sessions and I'm like, wow. But we just had a four-hour board meeting. I was suicidal. I didn't do that, obviously, I'm here. And we can work on that. And I'm really, the only thing I can say honestly is sometimes I book a movie. Or I'll book NCIS and I'll fly to LA and I'll be out three days. If I know ahead of time, we'll do a workaround. Or I can just call you because I knew, Erin, when I first met you, you were on that big camera. Oh, it was Erin was calling in, you know? So, I can do that. I'm happy to work around that, but I'm, you know, I'm committed. If I'm going to do it, we're going to do it. If I get a TV show and I have to be gone for four days, everybody wins. Right? Because it's like, you know, who are you from? Trinidad, Colorado. Yes. On the red carpet, you know? So, that would be, I would say, the only thing. And if there's an emergency at the theater or if there's a conflict, I can let you know, you know, not an emergency, but I can let you know about what we're doing at the theater. Yeah? So, everyone's got plenty of time.
Okay. Next question. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member? And it's two-part. Have you served on a governing board of any type or as a leader in any organization?
That's a hell of a question, kids. Yeah. Well, right now, I ran the music department for TSJC in 2010. And I worked with the entire TSJC system. So, Felix was, Felix Lopez was the president. I sat on every board there. I worked with my staff. I worked with Debbie Yuliveri, if anybody remembers Debbie Yuliveri, who's now, do you know, do you remember her? Yes. So, she's now in Santa Fe. So, I've done that. I headed a huge organization in Los Angeles called the Los Angeles School for the Performing Arts. And I was the head of vocal production. I also had to work with all the other directors, do you know? And, yeah, and I'm now executive director of the theater. And I've worked at least in three other director positions without having to take your time for me to discuss. Steve, read the first part again.
What skills and experience do you have you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
Yeah, for sure. I'm an actor. I'm a people person. I'm a listener. And I'm excellent with conflict management. Why? Because everything in New York as an actor is about getting along with people, dealing with directors, stage management, the lighting guy, and then every single one of those big personalities, getting along to make something brilliant. And I just have to say, that applies to anything. Getting along with people is top. I can be a great actor, but if I can't get along with Erin and Thurman and all of you, it doesn't work. So, sometimes that means I put myself aside, my belief. And I go, you're absolutely right, Thurman. You're absolutely right. See, that's God calling me and saying, you're talking too much. But this is something. Also, you guys, honestly, I've lived in six different countries. That was a lot, my father. And I grew up at Columbia University. I was five, running around Columbia and sitting in classes with collegiate people. And I just, I've been under such stress in my life and I've worked with so many different cultures. And we are a culture in Trinidad. I mean, if you really think about it, we are a culture here. So, I bring that perspective. It's not the only perspective, but it's like good cream in espresso. The more you pour it in, you know, it gets this great color. I think I add a color and bring all that. What? Why are you laughing? Color bolt. Yes. But I, I mean, you know, sometimes we say we don't want people in Trinidad who are outsiders. But I bring a worldwide perspective and with that, a lot of compassion. It's just true. So...
Okay. Great. The next question is, please list three words you believe other members of any governing board or organization on which you have served would use to describe you or your participation in that organization.
Do I have to do that?
You have to do that.
Three words. Fair, dynamic, expansive. Expansion, to me, takes in everybody. And even though sometimes it's hard to take in everybody, if we do that, then we can decipher things. We can meld it down, yeah?
I thought you said expansive.
Well, I didn't. And the reason that we're here at 8:30 is for you, right? And I didn't even get coffee. Yeah, there went that vote. Bye-bye.
So, three more questions. Based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as top priorities for us and why?
Oh, that's a really good question because everything is a top priority, isn't it?
Yeah.
Everything. And everybody here deserves to feel that they are a top priority. Well, you know, I'm just going to tell you, sitting from being the executive director of the theater, schools. Elevating our schools, supporting our teachers and bringing active arts from our seniors all the way to our kids and bringing them together. I've already got plans for this. We tried that with Mind the Gap, bringing plus 60s and 14 to 19 together, and that helped. So, we need the school activation. And I was really bummed, honestly, when I, because I just got myself, and I went to District 1 to lunch and I met all those kids. And they're not motivated. They're on their phones. And I'm just, I have to tell you, this is something I see everywhere and I want to address it. And I'm just, I have to tell you, this is something I see everywhere and I want to address it. We have to have something that's interesting, creative. So we're doing, for example, we're doing a theater week during spring break. So they'll be dancing, acting, writing, poetry. When I worked with the Boston Symphony Orchestra, we did that for kids at Tanglewood. And their favorite thing was writing.
We're at four minutes, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Well, it's all right, so that's, yeah.
Four minutes.
So four minutes. Seniors, busing them to places that they can be stimulated. I've already got it going on. And how do we reach out to them? We have legacy and we've got the Trinidad Inn. Maybe we can actually go and visit them and then bring them to us. I've got that in a plan for our Christmas show. But if you want to know what we're doing, you all have to come to the free reveal party on January 20th at seven. And then what was the other?
That was it for that question, and we have two more.
Yeah, I know there are roads and I know there are, last thing, kids, businesses. Creative, the space to create was made to bring artists into businesses. We need to be more active. It's being run like an event center, and this is not what it was originally for. It really was for that and bringing the, you know, the artists into a storefront. And we can, we can do better with that, and I have ideas for that, too. Yeah, without going on about that, yes. How many more minutes? Cross, West?
About three.
Three, hope you know.
Two questions. What are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing to both locals and tourists?
This is a great question. I've been sleepless about this question. Because we have families that have been here forever and we don't reach them. I'll tell you what I'm doing. We are doing a roundtable of all not-for-profits and small businesses, literally, at the theater, to get everybody to talk to each other. So we are not lining up five or six events on one Saturday and we have nothing for two Saturdays. And we're doing that, I'm doing that in conjunction with AADA and with PALS. So this is one thing, getting people to talk to each other. Then lowering ticket prices for the theater, for Tri Peaks Theater, to bring people that would normally come home, stay at home, bring them into the city. On Tuesday night, all residents over twenty years, they get fifty percent off at Almax. Do you see? The tourism is gonna happen, I mean, we need to work on that board and that will, that will happen. But it's the ones that sit further out, or out twelve, or out fifty. We're not getting there. And I'll tell you how I met Trinidad two years ago. I just started walking into every business and saying, hi, what do you need? Some of them were like, I need you to get out. Not me. All right, that's it.
Yeah, one last question, and it's three parts, so let me know if you're looking at it.
Who wrote this, is this you, Mayor?
No.
Go ahead, I'm not that complicated.
Does your interest in serving on city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something particularly you hope to accomplish while serving? And why is serving on the council important to you?
Yeah, it's all one question, said three ways. I... How do I say this and I don't sound egotistical? There is a resonance that comes, an energy that comes off me. People trust it, they want to talk to it. I call it spirit or God. And I've been aware of the conflict this year. I've been dealing with it at the theater, where I've been yelled at in my face and called an imposter. And it was really hard, it hit me right in the heart. However, I persevere and I find workarounds. And I thought, maybe my listening, my love, this energy, the theatrical component could be helpful. Is that time?
That's time.
Yes! That's what I have, say about that! So I feel like I've done my work. I think that really is, that's the bottom line. And, you know what, to just cap this and finish the share? I'm just thinking the right word. When, when things get really tough on the board at the theater and at network council, I have a great timing on a joke that makes everybody calm down. It sounds crazy, but it works. And then people soften, you know? So thank you, I really appreciate seeing all of you and having time.
Alison, before you go, just one last housekeeping thing. Can you verify for the record your address and the length of time you've lived in Trinidad most recently?
Yeah, two years in Trinidad plus. And I'm now at eight-one-eight Willow. I'm living in the parsonage of the Methodist Church. That was built in nineteen oh seven, so I'm right up here.
And Alison is eligible for appointment.
Thank you, Alison. Thanks so much, what do you do next? Do you do, you sit?
We've got one more. You're welcome.
I'll check and stand and miss their coffee.
There is.
There is.
We'll get you some coffee.
Awesome, and donuts. Oh, thank you.
Good morning. Morning.
Good morning. Last but not least.
It says it last for the first shot.
Andrew.
Matt Berning?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. So we're gonna allow, there are seven questions. We're gonna allow fifteen minutes and we're gonna give you a five-minute warning toward nearly your time, so thank you for your patience. Mr. Rutter is going to give you the questions, so...
So we'll get started. The first question is, how would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on city council?
I would ensure by doing diligence and collaborating with other members and seeing what their best interest is for them. I personally would talk to some of the citizens in regards to what are the issue bits on that matter.
And I would ask you to address your answers to the council, please.
Okay.
Okay, second question is, city council requires a significant amount of time, usually two to four meetings a month. I assume you know this, but it's two regular council meetings in the evening on the first and the third Tuesday, and then two work sessions regularly on the second and fourth Monday at three PM, plus interacting with residents and helping give a liaison to the constituents. How will this fit in with your other commitments?
If it is fine, I have, I work for, I work for an auto parts store here in town. I collaborate with several people, personal people come in. I would, I have accumulated sick time and leave time off and stuff like that, so I'd be able to use that if I needed to. So my personal job doesn't interfere with any of this stuff here.
Okay. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member? And have you served on a governing board of any type, for nonprofit, church, et cetera, or as a leader in any organization?
So, um, I'm sorry, can you read?
Yeah, the first part of it is, what skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council?
I worked for a construction company a while back. And one of my jobs was, is, I was a big coordinator there, and it was to reach out to local, state level, federal level, to figure out what their laws and policies were for that business to go in and operate. So I believe some of that background will help with my ability here as a councilman. Just, you know, having a little background in policies and, you know, understanding what kind of law and stuff like that.
Second question, sorry. And the second part is, have you served on a board of any type or as a leader in an organization?
No, I have not. I have not served on the board or leader. But I attended Trinidad College and I was nominated as all-academic student here, and I did it, too.
Great, Andrew, please list three words you believe other members of any governing board, organization, or any place that you've served would use to describe you or your participation in that organization.
I would say that I'm a fast learner. I'm respectful to the community and other people. And the third one would be, I'm just a go-getter.
Okay, based on what you know about our city government, what do you see as top priorities for us and why?
Um, on our city government here in Trinidad, I believe that roam conditions would be like a good priority for, for the city. Noticing the bridge right here on Ennis is starting to get real poppy and stuff, and that's a big concern, knowing that infrastructure is coming all across America, just to show the citizens of Trinidad that, you know, that the city is, actually would do something about and stuff like that, you know, here in town. I do know that they're doing all the woodwork on, on first Main and all the streets that are redoing them, so it's good to see.
Okay. And for the record, pop holy is an official, near term. Next question. What are your ideas to improve Trinidad to make it more appealing to both locals and tourists?
I think we need to implement some more stoplights at certain intersections. I know, I've been here for a while now here in Trinidad, and I know that the city has gotten more populated and the traffic just seems, you know, really, really bad. So maybe a few more traffic signals will help flow traffic. You know, in the evening when people are trying to rush home and do all the things they need to do before they go to other events, whatever they got planned for that evening, it just might make the process a little easier.
And then the last question, and there's, there's three parts to it, so let me know if you'd like me to repeat anything. But does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? Is there something particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council? And why is serving on the council important to you?
So, yes, like I said, I would like to implement more traffic signals and stop signs and stuff like that here in town. Maybe even some speed bumps for safety of the children. And if it's a personal goal, you know, to show my kids that you can do other things in life than not just limit yourself to things like, whatever your goals are, you know, just keep pushing forward, so.
Well, that's the end of the formal questions, and then one last housekeeping thing. If you could please verify your address for the record and the length of time you've lived in Trinidad.
So my address is four thirty West Kansas Avenue, Trinidad, Colorado, eight-one-zero-eight-two. I've been at that address for about four or five years now. Previously, I moved to Trinidad as a transplant from Albuquerque, New Mexico, back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Attended Trinidad State. Then I went back to New Mexico to work on my biochemistry degree. And COVID and everything kind of put a damper on it. And the kids got a little older and they, they liked Trinidad, they liked the school, so I didn't want to be too selfish and pick them up and take them to a big city where I can finish my personal goals, so. Okay, I just gotta put a pause on that for now.
That's the end of the formal questions, there is one more. Is Pueblo green chili or hash green chili butter?
I'll just say the green chili is good.
Well, thank you, sir, and that's it from our end for your interview, and I'll turn it over to Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. You can sit and we'll, we'll go through the process. We're done, we're done with you. Thank you, thank you, everyone that submitted an application and came through this. We're going on three hours now and I appreciate your patience. So does council want to have another little break or shall we just go for it?
Go for it.
Go for it?
Yeah, correct. Well, we need to have them vote. So, yeah, council, okay, you say you have a break.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's take a five minute?
Can you explain again what this next process will be? Just because it was kind of...
I'll come over and explain.
January 11th at 11:25. This is a special meeting of city council to uh fill a term uh on an empty council seat. Would you please call the roll? Trigell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Here.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Tavon?
Yes.
Grado?
Here.
Okay, I, the second item would be to have Mr. Downs reiterate what he told council earlier about our process. So all the candidates will understand how the process works.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in the first round of voting, the first round, you will all have a ballot sheet and you are all going to vote for your three preferred applicants. You must cast a three votes, um, and you will vote for three. You also of course sign uh the ballots. And then Steve and Kimberly will take the ballots and count them. And to make it out of the first round, uh, the, the applicants must have at least three votes. Okay. And I will announce who the people are that are going to advance. I'm not going to announce individual vote totals or anything like that, simply who the people are that advance. From those people who advance, and you'll have all their names, you'll be given another ballot that of course are going to sign. And on that ballot, you are each going to cast two votes. Okay. And two of, you know, the preferred people who remain, you're going to cast two ballots and they will then be counted and tallied. And in order to advance from that round, the people, the, the successful applicants must have a minimum of three votes there as well. Okay. So three, three, then two, three is how it's going to go. And I will let you know how that is going to go. You're, you're smiling.
No, I'm just.
Okay.
I'm just.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure it's making sense.
It never makes sense, but that's.
Don't laugh at that, people.
I'm just kidding. The tension is here and it's difficult and so I'm trying to avoid the tension.
Um, and so in that second round of voting, the successful applicant, I know you have a question, they must also get three votes again. Because there are going to be 12 votes cast in the second round. And again, you must cast two votes and you must sign your ballots. Okay. So after that round, it will be the people who also get three votes. Now, if there's just one person who gets the sufficient number of votes, like let's say one person gets six votes and the other people don't get three, then you would have a winner. Right? You would have, and I'm not, yeah, but anyway. So that in part depends on how many people are going to advance over one. But in any event, if there are more, if there's more than one person who gets three votes after round two, then we will announce who those finalists are. And in what we hope is the final round of voting, you're each going to get one vote for, you know, from amongst the people who have made it that far. You'll each get one vote and then you will, you will cast out your ballot for again, those people who survive. Um, and then that will be tallied and then that is going to be a majority rule. So it's going to be whoever garnered the most votes from the six of you. In the event of a tie, because there are six of you, in the event of a tie, then we, we're going to come back, you know, they're going to come back and you guys are going to talk about this if you want to. Try to persuade other council members if you like, and but we're going to take one more vote. Okay. In the event of a tie and see if the tie has been broken. If it hasn't, then what we're going to do is we're going to take ping pong balls and write the, I know, again, yeah. But write the initials of the finalists on ping pong balls and put them in a, in a, you know, container and have the mayor draw one ping pong ball and that will be your winner. I'm hoping that the voting process is going to be what gets us, you know, the, uh, the successful um, you know, candidate and the person who wins, but, but that would be the type of, so does that make sense?
Does anybody have any questions, applicants?
A couple of things. We will obviously through each round go through the process for that round. So it's crystal clear what we're doing. And then please remember to sign your ballots. They will become a matter of public record that are subject to inspection. And we want to be transparent after the process itself.
Do you want us to fold our ballots or?
If you can fill out your ballot, sign it and then fold it in half and hand it to less of these than no. Kimberly, I will tally them and you can list the results. If anybody wants a donut before.
Okay. All right, we'll take a few minutes.
All right, we will be back.
Okay, we have the results from the first uh ballot.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, members of council, the, uh, the people who have, the applicants who have garnered, garnered three votes in the first round of voting are Aaron Ogletree, Rusty Goodall, Carlos Lopez, and Allison England. So we have four.
So yeah, so plus now we move into round two voting and we'll vote for, for two of those four. Um, and Les, can you read them one more time just for the record?
Uh, absolutely. So you are going to be voting, you'll have two votes of the four people who remain. You will each vote for two and you will sign your ballots. And the people that, again, the successful, um, people, applicants need to get three votes in this round of, of voting.
I'll just read them. I think we all know, but I'll read them one more time just so everyone's clear. Aaron Ogletree, Rusty Goodall, Carlos Lopez, and Allison England. Don't mess up on paper. We won't spoil your ballot. We'll adjudicate it.
That's right. That's four. Okay. Two more clues. The last but the first. Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
FedEx.
We'll be back.
Okay. He always gets mad at me.
I know. You, I start out bad.
They get progressively mad.
Turns into the whole.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Or let Hardy add it still. That's right.
The mayor and I sat here.
I was down so good.
Okay, so second round of voting. Second.
The second.
The results.
The results in the second.
Right there. So, sorry. Okay, the people, the, the applicants who garnered at least three votes are Aaron Ogletree, Rusty Goodall, and Allison England. So you have three who are advancing to the next round, the third round, which may or may not be the final round, but you have three. Aaron Ogletree, Rusty Goodall, and Allison.
We're voting for two, correct?
No, this is just. Yeah, yeah.
Vote for mine.
Sorry. No, no. And you all signed your ballots?
Yes, sir, I think we did.
Yeah.
Everybody signed their ballots?
Five. Guess who? I know. We're waiting on Councilor Williamson there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. She was looking around, I thought she was...
I'm not trying to be dramatic here.
Yeah. But you are.
Decisions.
I didn't, I didn't want to waste my whole PTO day.
Right.
No, I remember I was full pall last time I did it.
Okay. Six, six. That is six. All right, you guys.
We'll be back.
Give us a winner.
Winner, winner, chicken, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Chicken, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a fair majority, aren't we?
Yes, that's correct.
So if there's a tie, we go to ping pong?
Well, you do one more. You do one more round of vote, yeah.
We should have used pickleballs instead of ping pong.
Sorry, sorry. We'll, we'll do that next time.
There will be...
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Councilor Truppa, you know, is kind of getting all the fun stuff, to begin. Yeah.
Don't write it.
That's right, yeah. Nothing easy for you, sir. Thank you.
I appreciate it. You should come back.
Okay, so the majority vote getter in the final round is Aaron Ogletree.
Okay. So...
Aaron Ogletree garnered the most votes in the three round.
I want to thank, thank you all again, and please continue with your willingness to serve the city. If it's not in council, there's an election in two years. There's lots of boards and commissions. Stay engaged. I want to thank every one of you for your participation in this, and I very much appreciate it. You're all valued members of this community. Anybody have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Motion to adjourn.
Ah, Mayor, and members of the council, do you need a motion, and a second, and a vote on the appointment?
Okay. I need a motion to approve Aaron Ogletree as the city council replacement. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the majority vote of Aaron Ogletree as city council replacement for the position vacated by the mayor, Councilwoman Karen Greer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Thurman?
Williamson?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Grigio?
Yes. Now I need a motion to adjourn, and thank you councils. Thank you staff for...
Thank you.
This has been a process this morning, so thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Do you want to drop anyone?
Yeah, I want to do that.